So, I started. The usual chairman is Mr. Ledger and he's out, absent tonight. And people will also see that Councilmember Claire. So, I'll take a brief. Is it done? Is it done?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll go ahead and call for order this meeting of the Board of Adjustment. And our first item of business is a public hearing. I'll kind of explain. First, we do a public hearing where we get a staff report. The applicant can rebut or present additional information about their project. And then it's open for public comment if you wish to speak on it, me too. But there's a form to fill out if you wish to speak. Or you put a small grid so you can just raise your hand and give your name and address. So we'll start first with the public hearing. And we'll start with the staff report. And Daniel, is that real?
Thank you, Chair, for the first. So this was something that we, or you heard last month. It's for variance for 33 Ancora Drive North. They originally were asking for a variance of eleven, thirteen feet? Let's say twelve. They have reduced that down to ten. But it's a single-family home requesting a setback variance to add a bedroom and bathroom to its relatively small fourteen-hundred-and-one square foot of livable area. Due to the odd lot shape and location of the garage, the owner contends that the only suitable location to add this new livable area is as proposed on the site line, extending to the rear yards historically twenty-five-foot rear yard setback. This item was brought forward to be a board adjustment on September fifteenth. At that time, the board asked the applicant to work with staff for their design and layout. The applicant has reworked the design and now requesting a variance of ten feet instead of the original thirteen-feet six inches. So in order for the board to grant a variance, there are four questions that must be answered yes. Those are that there are special circumstances or conditions applying to the land, building, or use referred to in the application which do not apply to the other properties in the district. Second one is that such special circumstances were not created by the owner-applicant. Third one is that the authorizing of the variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of substantial property rights. And D, that the authorizing of the application will not be materially detrimental to persons residing or working in the vicinity to adjacent property to the neighborhood or the public welfare in general. The applicant asserts that they have met all four conditions and staff concurs. With condition A, staff finds that the lot is non-sized and configuration and is a special circumstance applying to the land in the district, causing both the configuration of the home and the placement of the garage to be specific to the lot. The lot size and home layout are indicated there. And you can see he has brought this distance closer to the home. Opening up this area back here. Condition B is met. The lot was plotted well prior to incorporation into the city and not by the owner or application of the proposed variance. Condition C is met because the house is smaller than other homes in the neighborhood and requiring the addition to be placed on the other side of the garage would create an odd living area situation not typical of more standard-sized residents. Condition E is met because the location of the addition would only impact the residents behind him, which appears to also be much closer than the twenty-five-foot required setback. The applicant also has been advised by their neighbors that they have no issue with the proposed addition. Staff recommends approval of the variance as filed based on the application being the four required findings per granting of variance. And with that, I open it up.
Okay, thank you. The applicant, do you want, do you have anything to add to the staff report?
Well, just that the plan you see there. I've eliminated the bathroom and I may make it another two feet smaller.
Coming down away from the north or other way?
Yeah, away from the north. Two feet closer to the house.
Okay.
I might have that side.
Okay. Is there anything else you would like to speak to us about or add to the to the presentation with the staff page?
I think so.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any other questions for the staff or the applicant? I just had one that you had said it appears that the neighbor behind is closer. Did anyone ever get a measurement?
Chair, no, we did not.
Okay. It seemed by an aerial view that it was more like ten foot or. Usually I did, I could have gone to the assessors and done a few unmeasured, but.
And Chair, I did do that at the very beginning, but quite honestly, at this point, I just do not remember what the measure was.
Okay. All right. Are there any members of the public wish to speak about the variance ZA two-two oh seven, rear setback variance for three-thirty and Cara North? And Cara Drive North? No? So that I will close the public hearing and we will open up for the board members to discuss and take a vote. So.
I do have a couple of questions. Daniel, you mentioned that the neighbors confirmed that they are okay. Do we have that in writing? Or you, I think you mentioned actually that the applicant said that. Do we have confirmation or written?
To the Chair, Board Member Conner, we do not, but we can obtain that. A part of the conditioning, if you'd like, or if the board would like.
And then another question is, I believe this got brought up last month. Do we have examples of granting the fifteen-foot for properties located around the same district?
I was unable to look into it in the past month. I know. I was unable to look into it in the past month.
I don't think that, that, it seems like it's not one in any way that would have been a rear setback. I don't think there's any rear setbacks in that size that would be fifteen feet. So. I think that the thing in their favor is it's a really unusual shape on the side, very sharp angle. And it'd be really hard to make the floor plan work.
It's hard to see, but it measures out to about fourteen-seven, so about fifteen feet from the rear of the patio to the wall.
Okay.
On the home behind them.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Would they like to make a motion?
I already will make a motion that we approve the variance ZA twenty-two dash oh seven to allow a setback variance of ten feet. Is that right, ten feet?
A variance of ten feet for a setback required, require setback no less than fifteen feet.
That is correct.
Okay, yes.
I'll second that.
If you have a motion, a second, any further discussion? If they will say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any input? Okay, thank you. Good luck for the talk.
Are you done with me?
Good luck.
I didn't mean to sound like that. Do I have to do anything?
I'll get with you tomorrow.
Okay.
To the top.
Right here, right?
That starts, starts.
So, members of the board, thank you all very much.
Thank you. All right, next up is a variance ZA two-two oh nine. It's a side setback variance from five foot to three foot. And a rear setback variance from five foot to two foot, three inches at two oh eight Laguna Drive West. Okay. Again, we'll start with our public hearing and then move into our confirmation action part. So it starts with the staff report?
So this is a single-family home requesting a variance at a hundred-and-twenty-foot square foot storage shed in the rear of the home. The variance request is to allow for accessory structures to be built within, built two feet into the required five-foot setback and two feet, three inches into the north side setback. It's nearly three feet, is it? It's two feet, nine inches, two feet. Did I swap my map there? The shed will be at least ten feet from the main residence. According to Litchell Park zoning code, accessory structures of ten feet in height or less are required to be built a minimum of five feet from rear and side property lines. The applicant began construction and was issued a stop work order from the Building Department. The applicant has worked diligently with the city to correct this problem. And so that's where we are today. So there's the four standards for the four required conditions that must be met a review on the last variance. It's up on the screen. The applicant asserts that they have met the four required conditions for granting of the variance. Staff disagrees that the applicant has met the four conditions for condition A, staff finds the lot is similar to the other lots in the zoning, in the same zoning district and unable to find special circumstances that do not apply to the other properties in the zoning district. Condition B is not met because staff was unable to find special circumstances with condition A. Condition C is not met because the property is like many of the other properties in the district who enjoy substantial property rights. And condition may or may not have been met. If the variance is granted, it would allow for an accessory structure to be built within two feet, nine inches of the property directly west. But if the variance is granted, it would open up for other properties in the area to apply for and receive variance, building accessory structures less than ten feet from each other, which could create health and fire concern moving forward. So at this point, staff recommends denial of the variance as filed based on the application not needing the four required findings for the granting of the variance. At this time, I'll take any questions.
Do you have the programists have questions for this? So the applicant, you speak?
I'm the applicant.
Okay. Do you, say your name and.
Sure.
If you like, it's by the name.
I find this sitting down to be disrespectful to you, so. Yeah, so I take issue with.
Could you, um, say your name?
Oh, address, code, yeah. At, the address is two zero eight Laguna Drive West. Not to be confused with east. Actually, if I may, however, before you begin, I did receive a letter after the packet was sent out from Richard and Brendan Goldman, owners of a property located two four one South Olicial Road. They have support and approval for the variance from Litchell Park zoning code, section thirty-one, paragraph thirty-one point oh three D one, as it has been applied to two oh eight Laguna Drive West. The owner should be allowed slash approved to build their structure. We are unable to attend the meeting in person on Thursday, November third. However, are so many comments, we are so many comments in support of their request. Thank you, Mr. Loftus. Yeah, and for the board members, that was an unsolicited, we actually just received that on our board. So we thought that was nice, so thanks for the sign up. Which our young girls are very embarrassed to see a sign. Yeah, so that was a very quiet letter. We've also had several comments as well of support for this particular project. Daniel, thanks for your help to get I to sit this. So if I can, just take, if we have a moment, if I can just go, just line item real quick.
Sure.
I think because I would say in addition to the unsolicited support that we've received, I vehemently disagree with the conditions. So if we start at, the applicant asserts that they met the four requirements, required conditions, I would respectfully ask the board to reconsider based on this. So first one is condition A. The staff finds that the lot is similar to other lots in the same zoning district and unable to find special circumstances that do not apply to other properties. So in my opinion, I would find this to be extraordinarily egregious statement due to the lot, the lot itself, just its placement. Of the sixty-two total lots that's there, it's only one of the six other lots that don't have a neighbor and that reside right on the street. So that in and of itself makes it unique, in my opinion, as opposed to the other lots which you can see from a top draft of a map. So I would strongly state that that right there would be a yes, that it's not like, it's not similar to any of the lots, right? It's inherently different. If we take a look at the second item, which would be condition B, it's not met because staff was unable to find special circumstances with regards to condition A. I revert right back to my initial statement regarding the lots' inherent position as it is related to the street, being so that it doesn't have, we don't have a neighbor, right? Go forward to condition C. Condition C is not met because the property is like many other properties in the district who enjoy substantial property rights. Granted, that may be that they have other property rights. However, again, the property isn't like other homes that are on the wall because it sits on the side, we don't have a neighbor to it. I'll also take issue with, if we're discussing this case, the neighbor whom we do have support from that's directly to the west of us. They have a storage shed that's directly on the wall. And in fact, they are supportive of us having this shed there because it also provides some sort of privacy for them and for us as well. We have three, we have two young girls, I have three women that reside in the home. Privacy, as you can imagine, is helpful for many reasons. But we find that our neighbors are generally supportive of that. And I think that the, that letter is demonstrative of that. So as we look at condition D, that it may or may not have been met. If the variance is granted, again, so I'm going to go back to those first reading. I really believe inherently just due to the number, there are sixty-two homes within that, just on that immediate block itself, it's unlike any others. But in addition to that, I see the language here says that the variance is granted, it will allow accessory structures to be built in two feet, only three feet. But I can understand the concern that Mr. Loftus has and the board may have with regards to opening up to other individuals. I would like to offer a remedying resolution to it. Should the board be good enough to reconsider? Which is my request, I would state that it might make sense for the board to consider if you grant that, right? That this could be an exception for a home that sits along the street. Because it puts us in a very challenging situation. The issue with our property is that it has a body. I provided, I believe, eight additional supplemental photos as well that show that. We have two large trees, one of them provides privacy. The reason the shed is placed where it was is that we can maintain that tree to provide privacy for my dogs. So moving it back and forth, that's just to give some description as to why, why we need arbitrarily put it there, or we specifically put it there for that purpose. In addition to that, moving it over a little bit would also give us a little bit of safety concern. Having worked at a criminal law firm, I'll cite that the Arizona State versus Michael Murdaugh was a handyman who used the shed to jump onto a body very similar to what we had and killed a young girl, raped her and killed her. So I was part of that law firm, I'm going to be part of it and slaking. So I know that firsthand, that isn't, you know, hyperbole, it actually happened. So of course, I agree on that case that, you know, there's a lot of reasons why this comes to mind. So I would respectfully ask that we, if we take into account the unsolicited support that we have, support from our neighbors, the proximity of the property to the street, I will take note to your concern about it affecting people in the future. However, I would state that perhaps an exception may make sense if it's along the street, right? But I respectfully ask that the board consider, reconsider that.
Appreciate your viewpoints, thank you. Do the board members have questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I'm not sure this is necessarily relevant. I'm just curious what, it's a, you're going to use it for a storage shed? Is that?
Yeah, yes. So I have, I previously moved from another property we have a place over off the billboard. We're building a home in Cabo in Mexico. I have too much paperwork, as you can imagine. I've been all the politics and a lot of the baker boxes. Our home, it's just not, it's an old, it's, I need some, but, so. I need, I have a lot of papers. So yeah, it's a shed.
So is this a?
It's a storage, I mean, a storage, I mentioned the front storage shed.
Is this a, is it going to be air-conditioned? Is this going to be habitable for?
No. I mean, unless I get in trouble, I don't think. I don't suspect so, no. I mean, I'll probably have a fan or something. Like I said, I do have papers and important documents in there. You know, the lock it.
I guess the other question, your neighbor to the west, there's sheds there, but it's considerably less than ten feet tall. And in fact, it's barely visible over the wall, it's probably only six feet tall. Those are permissible, if you can't see them, generally don't have, the city don't generally have an issue with it. The zoning sticks way up and it crowds the site. Other issue, I don't know if property maximum lot coverage has been maxed out? If that's been calculated yet either? There's a maximum, you can't cover every inch of your property. Open space is required.
Sure, yeah.
And that's part of, and that's also part of the reason why we have setbacks for ventilation and sunlight, everything like that.
That's correct, yeah.
In addition to the aesthetics of the city, right? So those are the questions that I have. Is there any way you can make the shed shorter? So that it's not so.
I'm sure we could make, I'm sure I could satisfy the board if I needed to do some, some slight, some adjustments to it, I'm sure.
I mean, it was like a typical work shed that was only, you know, six foot or six foot eight tall, probably wouldn't have so much issues just when it's ten foot. It starts to look like a spare bedroom or a tiny house that someone else could live there. That's where all the antennas start growing up. We're less likely to allow that.
Yeah, and just, and just for the board's clarification here, we have no intent of, you know, we just want to make, make sure that it's, you know, that we're satisfying everything we can. And we, our intention was to aesthetically, to make it appear as if it's part, you know, just blend into its part of the whole same texture and everything. So we don't want it to look, we understand very much about property value being invested ourselves. We don't, you know, want to.
How tall is it, how tall would you have tended to be?
I believe it's, I believe it's nine and a half, nine and a half.
To the top of it?
Yes, to the top. It was not to exceed, yeah, we wanted to keep it, or right below that. I believe there was like a ten-foot threshold. We, we're not looking for an eyesore, we don't want problems by that. It's been a long day for us, I just came from work. I don't want to be, I know you don't want to hear me say that.
And it was intended to have a parapet? Or you were intending to put like a shed roof on it?
It was just going to be flat to the, to the home.
That's saying, are you going to see the roof? Is it going to be on top of the structure that you've got?
Yes, yep, you.
So it's not like a parapet is where there's a wall and then the roof sits below it?
No, I was actually just going to do, just a slight A-frame. Like a pitch roof, a picture, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But if the board doesn't find that satisfactory, you know, I mean, I'm here to work with you and hope that the board's.
I have a question. So I guess I'm just curious also then, you know, I mean, part of what we are here, I think, for is to sort of preserve the property, the code that as it's written, I mean, we don't write the code. We just have to kind of uphold it so that, you know, to establish fairness for everyone. And so I'm just curious, like, did you look at making the footprint of this shed smaller to, so that you could maintain the setbacks as written? I mean, do you need the one hundred and twenty square feet or whatever that looks like? And I think this is your, this is your diagram, right? So is that right or?
Yeah, yeah, they don't, they don't teach that in law school.
So anyways, I'm getting.
I'm not an engineer, so.
I'm just wondering, it's a hundred and twenty square feet approximately is kind of what the plan looks like. And so I'm just wondering, did you, did you consider doing something smaller?
That's a good question. I did, and so I tried to work within the parameters of, you know, the twelve by ten, one hundred and twenty square feet. And it's actually, the sad part is, that's a downgrade from the current storage facility they had, and went from Iron Mountain to now, that's, I mean, it's, you know. I have a lot of years worth of files. I was like, I actually, I appreciate a question, but it's funny because I actually thought a hundred and twenty, it's like, oh wow. When you step in, it's not that, you know, feel that. Yeah, I would, I would put it this way, definitely use it.
Yeah, Mike, Mike is a lawyer and she also has a garage.
Oh, yeah.
I understand.
Yeah. This one's not happening, so. I want a lot of questions.
Any other questions?
Yeah. These are never fun for us. I won't end that until we have it. Question for you, she brings up a great point. So first of all, from a lot cover's perspective, how big of a unit could he even have on the lot?
Commissioner Connor, can you give me just a moment?
Absolutely. I'll say the applicant a question while we're waiting. So did you, this construction started obviously right from the picture.
Yes.
Did you, did you have plans, like, is a contractor doing it?
Yes, and the individual was saying it's a, it's a local contractor. I believe the individual used to be on board or he hired someone to help us, but he does, he only does work specifically here in Litchell Park.
And so you do have plans, were the plans given to Daniel?
The plans were not given to Daniel. I, like I said, it was a hundred and twenty square feet. So I thought I could just figure that out and apparently miscalculated. For me to do that's going to. It's, you know, I specifically did it that way for, most importantly, just, like I said, one case comes to mind, I think it was the state of Arizona, and I just thought, you know, trying to use the law.
And our code is, there's a size, I don't know if it's high or tight, that you don't need a building permit.
That was a one-twenty.
But you still have to abide by the zoning codes, so. That's for placement. And we've had, we've had another property owner where we had to actually tear down a really nice pool cabana because he built it too close to the property line. And that was a huge, I mean, it was hard for us to sit because he had invested so much money in it. But he didn't, he didn't do plans, he just started building it. And that's where he got in trouble. Is that working on it?
I have, to the Chair, the board member Connor, I have some, some kind of rough numbers. Yeah, actually. So I just took the footprint of the house and then added a hundred and twenty square feet. And with that, the property itself, it's in residential cluster and they have a max lot coverage of sixty percent. And it appears it is approximately fifty-two point two, fifty, fifty-two percent for their max lot coverage.
All right, and then I think I wanted to, just wanted to point that I was thinking as you're, that when we talk about special circumstance on, as related to a property, we're normally talking about a physical feature of the land, not necessarily anything else. So like our previous project had this really acute angle, really hard to build on, especially hard to build something that's similar to his neighbor's or in the same area. And this case, your lot is basically the same size as every other lot. And even though it's on a street side, you're, you're not, you weren't required to have a street setback. And a lot of people consider not having a neighbor to be an advantage, not a disadvantage. So that special circumstance, I can't, I don't really agree with you saying that that's your special circumstance. Normally, it's because there's something wrong with the site, there's a, there's a stream running through it. It's a really weird shade. It's smaller than everybody else's lot. It's smaller than everybody else's lot, um, something like that, that gives us that special circumstance that was not created by you. Or other, sometimes we've had a zoning overlay that's put a hardship on someone where it was built under a different zoning code. And our new code overlaid it, made it difficult for them to comply without a variance. Those are some other special circumstances that were given latitude. But here, I'm not seeing that, so.
Yeah, I, I agree, and just to add, I think, usually in special circumstance, so you said in special circumstance, you know, being street facing, not having a neighbor, but I don't see how that circumstances directly germane to the need for having more space for your shed. Do you understand? I mean, I didn't quite follow why that relates.
Well, my point is that it lines up to the street, so what maybe it may have just perceived by some people may not be for someone else. But it's interesting because you bring up a very good point, if you pull up the picture again, can you scroll down just a little bit? Uh, I mean, I probably just up, yeah, right here. So if that's the county line, I will tell you, if you reject this, which seems like that's what you're inclined to do, is that a safe assumption, to deny it or?
I understand, I'm not seeing a special circumstance, and that's kind of like the legal basis where we have to comply.
I'm glad you got to that point, because I would tell you the other part of this, so should you choose to do that, um, we have a different problem. And the problem's gonna be this piece of land right here, who owns that piece? Who owns all of this?
I'm not sure where your property line lies.
Well, that's key to this whole thing, right? So let's go back to that photo, okay, go, go back to that photo. That's key to what I'm about to say, and that's key to this whole position. This is city property. So you're responsible for all this, right? City property.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's vegetation, people have been paying water, there's homes there. None of this is big cleanup. So I think what you'll find is that if this is denied, which I'll accept that, but you can't have this, you, you can't, if you deny the variance, that's, that's fine. But the problem you're gonna run into is that I think you're gonna find that there's gonna be a substantial lawsuit against the board and the city, which I'll be prepared to file on the year Tuesday or on Wednesday after the election. But I will tell you that you're gonna find out, there are countless neighbors that are going to ask for punitive damages because people have spent money on landscaping, they're spending money on water, and there's a lot of people that are very upset that they don't know that this is city property. Because if that's where the county line starts and you're gonna move the, the, you know, if you're gonna, if you're having to take that, you know, if you're having to consider that, then that means that you own this, and so if you own it, there's many, many years that's gonna have to be compensated for all the work and payment and water and most of that's in.
Does it clarify, you would only bring this lawsuit if we denied the variance?
I'm not saying that I'll do that if, and I'm just saying that you can't have it both ways, you can't say, oh, well, you, you know, that's the property line and we're not gonna do anything about this.
I mean, we're only talking about one issue tonight.
No, I don't, but I'm just telling you, that decision, it has implications as well, either way, there's implications. So, I mean, as it may, I just wanted to let you know, that's what's coming down the pipe. So, I mean, is there any objections, is, is that incorrect? Because I'm being told by everybody that this right here is all part of that city, and we've been paying for it, people have been paying for water, so I would expect that the city's gonna owe a lot of residents some money for that. And if so, where does it stop?
It's not really an issue we're discussing tonight.
I, I get it, but I'm just telling you the implication of it, so if you're inclined to, you know, pass on the variance, which I can understand as well, this is gonna be the implication of it.
I still, I don't follow how it's applied, but that's okay, because we're still doing one issue tonight, which is the variance.
I'm just simply making a point, this is city property, there are many, many residents of Lynchville Park that have invested time, money, so.
You make a valid point about that, but there's a different forum for that, to bring that, and.
And that may be, but I'm just simply saying that, so.
Yeah, and I kind of agree, it's kind of inappropriate to bring up tonight, if it's your intention.
We thought, we thought this whole time it was property.
I know, if you go up, you know, most of the, like, the large streets, burning, old Lynchville Road, the right of ways where the land belongs to the city, the city does take care of most of it. But there, there's right of ways everywhere where most of the people take care of it themselves. Even where I live, I take care of the landscaping because I don't expect the city to show up every week and make it as nice as I would have it.
Well, there, there, right over here, there are human feces, our daughter witnessed someone using the restroom, and there are human feces, they use the restroom right there.
Well, that could happen anywhere.
Chair, can I recommend that we either close the public or do we have comments from the?
If there's no other questions for the applicant or staff, then we'll go ahead and close the, oh wait, I have one request to speak from Carl Hartman.
I'm just here to speak in support of the request for the variance. Because Ginger is a neighbor, we are dog walks, she has two little chihuahuas, and I have a little here. A dog, we run into one another regularly, in fact, our midnight walk takes us around onto a west street. And I saw this going up, and then suddenly construction stopped. And I ran into her, and I said, what's going on? And she indicated that there was a problem with the setback because they had previously thought that their property line was at the edge of the sidewalk. And I went on the assessors' website to find out what their lot width was. And my neighbor and I, just yesterday, we bought out our big tape and we measured, and sure enough, their property does end at that wall, the wall that runs east-west. And, uh, but the problem, as I see it, is their neighbor to the west has a storage shed which is erected and is nearly touching the wall, it might be an inch or two away from it. And I thought, well, just for consistency, it would seem that if they're allowed to have their storage structure, then, it was only this evening that I brought up the agenda packet to discover that it was going to be denied. I thought, well, that's not very consistent, you know? But Article two of the Constitution says there should be equal application of laws. So if the neighbor to the west is allowed a structure that impinges even more onto the setback requirement, which it may, it probably was not brought before the BOA, then why should this be denied? And also, that neighbor to the west, and it's not Brenda, because I didn't know that she was the owner of that property until just moments ago, but I, I think there are renters that are in there. On the city, on the city property, it's a trash heap. And there were countertops out there, there was a, what do you call it, a toaster oven, and it's been out there for several months. Finally, yesterday, it was only eleven o'clock last night that I learned that someone had taken most of that, not all of it, but still the large amount of, you know, cuttings and things that, so if that is in fact city property, then the city quite some time ago should have been maintaining that and not allowing a buildup of trash to leave there. So again, the point of, you know, let's everybody find out who's responsible for what, and then let's, let's take care of it. Be it city or be it property owner or be it renter, in this case, I think it should be the renter, I don't think Brenda's responsible other than as being the landlord, she should tell her renters, clean out that trash that's along the street side. But yeah, just from the standpoint of, with the fact that it is somewhat unique, and that there is no neighbor to the north, and so even with the presence of that storage structure, it's, it's not impinging upon an occupied property to the north side. So that was why, my feeling was to be consistent with the property occupier to the west, who already has a storage structure. And the fact that it doesn't impinge upon an occupied property, uh, which is the street, which I learned is a fifty-foot wide right of way, and I measured that, and it goes from that wall to the other wall to the north of it. So it, so everybody seems to have, it's just a matter of knowing where, where your property line starts. So really, that is the responsibility of a property owner, is to know where your penthouse are. Ginger has always maintained a very good, you know, traffic looking structure, maintains the landscaping, and so I just wanted to speak in support of it. Thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you. We do appreciate everyone doing their best to try to keep their places nice. And, and to be honest, there are a lot of people who do a lot of stuff, but it's against the zoning code, and we haven't had very good enforcement in some cases. Um, so, I mean, the only reason I think the other one may not have been caught is that because this is not visible.
Well, it is visible, it's above the, the.
It's above the fence line, maybe it's not been caught, but.
It's, it's out of view with that particular shot.
Is there a way to go to Google Maps to see that? Because I'm, I'm not following.
I think I did notice when I was coming, and I drove by and I did see it.
Maybe I can hold it up, but I don't know if it's actually. I don't know, you were, if you're breaking glasses.
I did, I have seen it, and I do know that it's probably not, it's not suitable for the building, but either. But that's not what we're very excited, that's why I'm, I appreciate it. We're, we're getting off, off of our agenda, and legally, we're gonna stay pretty tight. So, um, if there's someone else that wants to speak, does anyone else care to speak? Alright, then I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. And then we'll start our discussion.
Yeah, I have a, a question for, for Daniel to help me confirm. So I'm understanding this correctly, if we're looking at this diagram, in theory, if this was over five feet, and this was over five feet, he could have a shed.
Ten, ten feet away from the name, which it appears that it was.
Yeah, so the, the height restrictions is ten foot max? So it's not ten foot, so if you do a pitch?
No, I was, I would have, yeah, so we were, I'm forgetting his name. Um, but I would, I would certainly keep it below, below the.
That like the peak of it would have to be below?
Yes, yeah, oh, absolutely, yeah.
And then, and this would go to designer view at that point? And just for, for, just for heads up, designer view would probably prefer to have a parapet, a flat parapet that would look like the neighborhood, not a pitched, so that it would look like a mighty shed for home, be fair.
Well, I could do, yeah, I mean, I, I would, I would be open to anything the board would recommend, uh, to, no objection, I would do whatever, you know.
At this point, the only thing we can tell you is that it's gotta be five feet away, without a variance.
Five feet from the.
From the property line, yeah.
So, so right now, it's, it's, so, and so the request right now is three I.
Yeah, there's a structure right here, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh.
So, um, I guess, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, no, please.
Um, like I said, I just wanted to say, so I just kind of give my part of the discussion. So just for your information, we are just a board of neighbors, and we just live here and are, just like you, wanting to try to maintain the standards of the community. And so, you know, I mean, I can definitely hear the, the feeling that I think you're expressing that feels kind of unfair when you see other things happening around, maybe the city isn't maintaining what they should, or one of us has a shed. But for this issue, you know, I mean, I don't think that we can hold people who are breaking our standards as the standard for behavior. So because someone else has, has broken the rule, then we are allowed to break the rules to, and that's actually why we take, or I at least, I mean, I guess I can't speak for the board, but I think we all take the variance process very seriously, and it's exactly for that reason. Sometimes there might be a reason that somebody was approved for something, but it's not immediately apparent, and then the neighbors think, oh, okay, well, he did it, I can do it, nobody's paying attention. So I definitely hear you that, that you see things around sometimes that it's frustrating, and you're like, how did that even, how was that, how did that happen? And, you know, and when, hopefully, you're trying to abide by the zoning line, and it's like, it feels frustrating. But I think that doesn't really change, you know, our requirements here, which is that we have to, I mean, it's a legal standard that we have to make sure that those four things are met, um, in order to approve a variance. And personally, I'm, I guess I'm not, I don't see that the special circumstances happening, and the fact that I think that there is a way to accomplish this shed for you, in a way that also would maintain the setbacks.
Okay, um.
So. So we can make two feet in on both sides?
Yeah, shifting or making it smaller, I, hopefully, I don't want to make it smaller, but if it just shifted a little bit, um. I understand that there's an impact to that, and I'm very sorry about that, but, um. But I guess that's, so that's where I'm at.
Would, would, would the board be willing to consider, uh, ju, like I said, because of the variance, I, I know the implication that, to your point, right, the integrity of the law has to be applicable across the board. So any further, if a variance would be considered, would you consider it due to special circumstance because, because it's on the street? Is that something the board would consider a variance? So that, in this particular case, perhaps leave it, you know, leave it is not to exceed anything, keep it flat, um, under nine feet? But perhaps a variance could be considered just because of, because it's on the street?
It would still have to back it away from the, the neighboring property, because there's a code, a fire code, you cannot be, there has to be.
For, for the back wall?
From property to property, so if somebody else would have put a shed in the, set it on the side, they're put it in the back. If you're putting it closer than five feet, then you're less than ten feet apart, that's a fire code violation.
Would, would the board be open to, um, me moving it, um, from the west to the east, to making that, to that, and then keeping the distance where it is now? And just, and again, and again, the basis would just, the basis would just be because it's, because it's on the street, um.
So I guess I just don't, I, I personally not understanding how that being, if, if that is a special circumstance, how is it a special circumstance to this variance? Like, I don't understand why you would need to have the shed closer to the street just because it's a street facing property. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I guess, so, yeah, that actually does make sense, but, and, and then I think the converse is the way that I'm seeing it, is that there's no one, is that the, the fire code, that there's no one next to me?
And, and that's true, but we have to apply the zoning code as it's written.
So that was. Right, that was. Okay.
So it does say property line, it doesn't say street, um.
So that, so that, that was my, that was, and I probably didn't phrase that properly. Would be, the exception would be for, um, a property that, where the property line is street, or if it's on the street, whether there's a neighbor? If the board would be open to that.
So that, I think that's actually, I'm sorry, go ahead, I don't think that's within our purview to be capable of doing. I think if that is something that you wanted, you have to probably go to the council to try to get the zoning changed.
You have to have the zoning changed for that, because it's right now, we can only, we can only give a variance to or enforce the zoning as written. We don't have the power to change the zoning code that goes to the venue and zoning in the city council.
Just being able to move two feet away from the neighbor, would that be two feet more?
Two feet from both, I mean, it has to be five feet from both property lines.
So from the wall on the street?
From the wall, from the wall on both sides, I mentioned the wall, in between you and your neighbor is the property line. And then the wall on the side is also the property line.
Sounds like that.
Right.
And if there's, if there's already concrete poured, you can still move the wall back. Um, well, there's, well, there's a footing there, so maybe that would work.
Oh, the shadow would be there.
Yeah. So it's the same, if you're gonna have to dig up, if you poured concrete already, um, probably light enough, probably the sap would be strong enough, but, in, anyway. We're here to go ahead and vary, so.
Yeah.
Um, so we closed the public meeting, a lot of, been giving a lot of latitude, but I'm gonna go ahead and go with our, our boardmen to decide the matter. So one of you would like to make a motion, please?
Yeah, I, I will, I mean, I'll just say, I mean, this, again, this, this isn't fun for us. Like, we want to try to help our neighbors, and I don't know, like, I don't feel like I could support this based off of the legal side of it. So you seem like you have good intentions, seem like you're a family, a great neighbor, I, that's just, I don't see how, I, I can't support it for that. support it for that, for that sole reason. Um so I will uh go with staff on the recommendation that we deny the variance of Z A two two dash zero nine. Period.
Second, okay, their motion is second, any further discussion? All the neighbor for the motion denied, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm.
Um next one, our agenda is approval of the minutes.
I move, approve the minutes?
Second, all the neighbors say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um do you have a skip or advance until the five view? Okay, go ahead, let's skip over items three and four and the motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Okay.
All the neighbors say aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Okay, my voice is a bit over here.
You guys awake out there?
See, now now what you came here for?
Okay, it's all interesting.
It was interesting to listen to it, and I know you've got you guys in tough spots.
What do you like about here, huh?
Now, people like to do their own thing.
Yeah, I know, it's very fun.
Burning rules, I guess, it's a lot of.
That's the, that's the, that's fire, right?
Okay, so now we're gonna move forward with our design review board meeting, um all called to order. Uh first item of business is um design plans for nine hundred and eighty-five square foot addition and interior remodel for six twelve North Valoma Avenue. Um Daniel, give your um review on that, and is the applicant present?
Yes, cheers.
Okay.
Uh thank you, Chair. Okay, so the applicant of this project is looking to add a two-car garage and additional bathrooms, remodeling interiors on. The applicant is looking to add garage space that will fit modern vehicles, the addition will also be accompanied by a remodel of the home. The proposed remodel will include moving the master bedroom to the current garage location, kitchen will be remodeled and increased in size, and the proposed new addition will match the existing residents of both color and material. And the site, well, picture of the before and then the after, you can see garage is gonna be moved to here, and this will become interior living space. Uh staff finds a proposed remodel in addition to the home will as an immediate value to residents in the overall neighborhood. With this, staff recommends approval of the application subject to the exhibits provided by the applicant in the following condition, all colors and materials to match existing residents. And with that, I welcome any questions?
Okay, this one is within setback sense?
Yes.
Totally, yes, okay. Uh first, my goal, I'm just kidding. Okay, if you would like to speak, um give your name and address, or you have nothing to add to the.
Yeah, no.
Or you give your name.
Yeah, my name is Gilia Reyes, and I'm a designer, and uh yeah, we're just trying to maximize uh the setbacks and access speed, a lot of coverage and meet all those requirements, and then try to take advantage of the property and make the use of of this, of the benefits of the client, and I mean, that's that's all I have to say.
And I can see elevations, are there elevations? There are some, but.
Are they quite high?
Are you standing, I'm looking further, actually. I don't, I saw. Okay, yeah, that's it. I knew I looked further.
I have that vision.
And it it could just match the existing? Yeah. System texture structure, yeah. Let's see if there's. And it looks good?
I'll be definitely happy.
Yeah, and that's the model, I guess. Any questions for staff or applicant? Sure, to make a motion?
Sure, I would move that the, along with staff staff's recommendation, approve the application for ninety-five, or excuse me, six one two North Valoma Avenue.
That's okay, okay, you have a motion second and further discussion? All the favor say aye?
Aye.
Say aye. And target, thank you.
I gotta go to work.
Thank you. Should I turn my husband in Cleveland, no. Okay, um I indeed revise color of display doors for public storage located at forty eight thirty North El Mirage Road. Um to applicant, okay, Daniel, go ahead, and then can you?
Slowly whittling again.
Okay.
Uh thank you, Chair. Okay, so this is for forty eight thirty uh North El Mirage Road, it's a three-story public storage building on the uh southwest corner of El Mirage and Camembert Road. Uh the applicant is just checking, is requesting to change the approved gray tone to the second and third floor display doors to their corporate color orange. Public storage mission came into and received ERB approval for the building design in August twenty twenty-one. At that time, the doors were gray, uh they were in construction, and they would like to add their corporate color to the building. Uh staff finds that although the orange is a bright color, uh with the mass of the building, the orange will not appear as a dominant color. The applicant should confirm whether the tho- orange door on the front of the building will be installed as it was approved by the ERB in August twenty twenty-one. But with that, staff recommends approval subject to the exhibits provided by appi- by the applicant in the following condition, applicant to to confirm that the orange door on the east side of the building will or will not be installed. And with that, I I welcome any questions?
Give your name and and your business.
I'm opening the microphone here, I'm Kerry Delaney, um I'm one of the principals, uh the owner of the building, uh D S D Capital. Uh it's eight forty Ash Street, Buena Rica, Illinois. Um I don't know if this board was here in August of, you guys, okay, so when we came before this board, I'll give you a little brief history here and try and keep it short, because the the night is dragging on. We didn't know who was gonna be the operator, so, and each of the public companies that operate those facilities have different colored schemes. You know, one has an orange, one has yellow, open, or this type of thing, so we weren't quite sure, so we made kind of benign with the doors, it's kind of like, well, I don't wanna show something. And at the time, talking to Pam, she said, well, that's behind the windows, so it's really interior of the building, and it's really not germane to designer view, so it wasn't really an issue. Daniel and the current um senior manager, you know, feels that it should be, and I and I agree with him, uh that you guys should take a look at that. So this being public storage, their colors are orange, and we have signed, you know, a management contract with them, so we manage and operate it as a public storage, as brave as a public storage signage as that. So that's how how we, we didn't get it right the first time, from what you saw. But again, the the doors, I mean, you know, most of the doors face the river or to the north, and the north of this property is not Mitchell Park. So there's no Mitchell Park residence in that, and it's a, it's a, it's a dumpster property also.
It it faces Camembert Road, right?
Camembert, Camembert.
But eventually, there'll be buildings in front of that.
Well, there are buildings in front of it, there's a, there's a, there's a Burger King, and there's a collision repair.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
But the but the resident says they're on the north side of Camembert, they're not Mitchell Park residents.
So, is there a bigger picture that shows it with all the, with all the doors?
Well, I took a can, what I took a can show you, okay, is a property that we built in Las Vegas with very similar colors that has those doors, and they're they're kind of muted, I mean, they don't really pop out at you.
Oh, they're inside the.
They're inside the door, yes, they're inside the building, that's behind the.
Yeah.
And that's what we're talking about, it's only, so they're inside, I was trying to, I was wondering, like, okay, so otherwise, this is the same as what we've already perceived, uh.
Yes. Building's up, it's built.
Yeah, exactly.
I actually had, the orange was up there, and Daniel came by and said, hey, we had that on the designer view, so we had, we had, we had turned around.
Okay. Okay, okay.
And have the uh the wall door, you know, up there for now, uh to get our T, you know, our our certificate of occupancy.
Yeah.
But we're open and we're we're leasing units, I feel COVID will release a storage unit, so.
Yeah, that's the.
Yeah, I know, it's.
Yeah, I didn't want to jump in somebody else's party, but that's, that's.
It's kind of a business party, really, so I mean. Um I think there's, I have my head it all, and it's kind of reminiscent of the dignity of of the of the.
Are you?
Oh, and speaking, speaking of the orange on the wall, we did not install it, and we will not install it.
The door, is it?
It was, it was a, it was an architectural element, it wasn't really a door, it was an architectural el- element of of an orange panel, uh.
Is that over there?
Yes, that that was the first door by the entry, because the office entry is uh is is right there. So that is not installed, that is, that's gray, um what's that material called, Daniel? It's got a name to it, it's a, it's a, it's a textured panel that is uh, that's already installed on all that wall there, that whole wall on the doors, uh uh east side. So um but we'll not install that, that works better, actually, it seems better.
Uh.
Oh, it's better with yours, or not, oh, you want us to put it up?
No, I mean, no, the the like adding the, what you're requesting, I think actually looks better.
Yeah.
Oh, yours was a better than the gray?
Yeah, no, it 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 is, I think it will pop to give a little, um it's a commercial venture after all, I mean.
In an industrial zone, it's probably, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and it reads its accent, to me, it's one of those, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm just speeding this up, would you want to make a look?
Yes, I would like to, but we approve the uh revised color for the display door that public storage located at forty thirty North El Mirage Road.
I'll second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Um they would say aye?
Aye.
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 Thank you so much, we're looking forward to being a great neighbor to Mitchell Park.
Thank you. Thank you.
Daniel, thank you so much for your help.
Um I indeed see post two-car garage additions for residents located at forty eleven East Olive Street.
This applicant chair is not present, I don't know if we just wanna uh.
And and the convention to continue to our next um meeting on the first Thursday of December. All my, all my question?
I'll second.
All the would say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then last thing, um I indeed design plans for front porch cover addition at four hundred East Blue Garden Road. Um and you're an. Just a wild guess. Okay, Dan, your.
Alright, thank you, Chair. Uh so this was a prop before the board uh for their July seventh regular meeting, uh but at that time, staff and the applicant had meant that they prior decided that wasn't quite where it needed to be, decided to table the issue, so here we are, we are back. So the applicant is proposing to build an approximately fifteen by thirty-five foot, fifteen foot by thirty-five foot front patio cover. Resident faces south and does not have sufficient shade to enjoy the front patio area. The design will consist of four by eight posts mounted to block supports. The posts will remain in natural wood color, and the block will be similar same last finish uh as the exterior of the home. Roof of the patio will match the existing residents, the exterior of the home will be painted white, picket fence. Uh staff believes the design is well thought out and will provide value to the home and surrounding area, staff recommends approval subject to the exhibits provided by the applicant. And there are more exhibits to ones in fact, and I can bring those up, uh to show different angles of the of of the roof. Just a moment. So Chair, to answer a question that had been asked previous, this is uh what the, from Neolin looking east uh would appear. Yeah, so it doesn't quite do it how it's consistent, so.
Kind of a little, kind of a, kind of a kind of overframed over, uh to increase where it's going. It's kind of like a a cable, but then it changes pitch over the garage shot?
Yeah, that's what it looks like, uh maybe the applicant can clarify for us a little more.
Do you have a, do you think I have a street view, please?
Yeah, I have some, just a moment, please.
They're driven by their own time.
I use the kind of assistance website for that. So here is the front of the residence. Uh this tree here has been removed? Has been removed?
Both trees.
Both trees have been removed. And I believe they were, they were dead or dying.
They were, they were very diseased, and the oldies. Yeah, darn.
They've been around a while now.
And they were fifty years old.
I can see that that pitch was this.
Yeah.
So they would have to overframe in order to bring it, it's right there, like, when you come down just a bit, and then it would change pitch, like, to center of the garage door. So there'd be some overframing in order to change it to this.
Overframing, meaning they're gonna frame up on top?
Over on top of the existing garage?
Uh yes, yeah, because they're gonna maintain the um the two twelve pitch for the asphalt shingles.
Okay.
So they had to have that.
Yeah, because before we had noticed that if you continued that slope straight down, you would be able to walk under it, because it would come down, so you'd change the pitch.
Right. Yeah.
But it has to come all the way back in order to meet that.
Yes, yeah, it's gotta all the way up into the current.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's probably fine, good, yeah. So obviously, if they're gonna refinish the um the E, because or or else? I'm not sure how they, is that existing E, will they go change it entirely and then refinish that fascia?
On that side. On the garage side?
On the garage side?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay.
I don't have a total vision of that yet, but yes, it will, there's B board on the side, on the upper parts of the house right now, and he said he could match that or or be very close, so that it would match that B board, and then that's all.
With A go ahead there.
Yeah.
I'm saying that the finished fascia edge is gonna change slope, so it'll, so we need the existing there, go back and then do the overframing, so there's like a double fascia, one step back. Or totally replace that one, and I'm not sure how that would look.
So is um, is this replant go to the like that?
I think it's below, I think it's below, yeah.
It's lower, okay, so they probably took it to it, but.
Yeah, where where would meet up with that one, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
Let's see, it is showing like a whole new one, but it's not showing what happened to that old one, where it goes and what gets trimmed in between it, um because it, I'm imagining it's having to be with the roof rafters.
With that, they're gonna build up on that.
Yeah, I mean, it's supposed to be an overframing on top of those, those existing, that's still gonna be here. And that's that that always overgripped out.
But I mean, maybe just, I've seen that's more than a sort of.
It might look a little funky, because it would be that whole difference between the the new and the old.
So it needs to, it'll still be like this, but still actually be there, what you're saying?
That's what I'm wondering, yeah, but I don't know, it, it'll just, it's straight up into it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think that's, well, I mean, I didn't tell her.
Yeah.
May I ask the applicant a question?
I don't think she knows the what what this plan to do, but.
Oh, no, my, my question was is, um again, this is more curiosity, I don't know if it's a hundred percent relevant, but are you working with a designer on it, an architect, who who's helping with, like, designing that, the new roof?
Um it's, right now, it's me and my nephew and a contractor.
Okay, and and the, are you aware of the contractors, like, booked up into the rafters?
He's not going into the rafters, he's gonna build on top of the roof, he's gonna take all the shingles off, build a brand new roof, and then re-shingle it.
Okay.
So it will all fully gather and match.
Could we, we'd have to just.
So what you, what they could do is the new overframing would actually start where the, um, the overhang. So you could leave the, just the overhang part, and then the new would be tighter to the, at the end of that, so.
We'll go ahead, we can, we can just take that out, right?
Yeah, it's, but there's, there's gonna be some stuff, I don't know. I think it'll be okay, it'll, it may look a little thick, kind of that, like, it'll, it'll be noticeable that if they take that overhang out and then change the pitch of it. Cause what's in between there now, I guess, what is the end, the end right now is just. Can you zoom in on that?
Do you want, uh?
Yeah, that that finisher. Yeah, they could, they they could finish that, okay, that's fine. They'll just have to extend it, uh, to finish it and match it, yeah. Okay. Um, um, any other questions?
Oh, I have one quick question. So you, you did already sandblasted?
Yeah, yeah, the bottom part. It was, uh, this is my parents' house, and and I've been in it just a few years. So, um, it was a darker green and then a sage green, and it was darker on the bottom, and I had it sandblasted. Thought I was gonna then get painted and do all of that, and that's been years, you know, but it looks really cool, because it was built in the sixties. So it made this really cool gray aggregate. Yeah, slum block, whatever you call it, and it's just really fabulous. It looks really cool.
Good, I like, I like the sandblaster. I'm I'm a little partial to sanding it.
I love watching it, but I've never been around it before, and it, and it was a mess, but it was fabulous.
Okay, well, let me give those. Heather, thank you for intending a question, um, for your motion. Okay, I I would like to move to the, uh, design plans for the front porch cover addition at four hundred East Blue Lawn Boulevard. Subject to, I'm sorry, were there, were there conditions in the?
Applicant presentation?
Just a, a typical matching, existing building, materials and colors.
Close the.
Okay, I'll subject it up.
I'll second it.
Okay, your motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, any approval of the minutes?
I'll make a motion to a period.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and now we can do staff report on current events.
Thank you, Chair. Um, uh, well, two things. Planning and zoning will be having a, a meeting to discuss the fifteen acres on the northwest corner of Litchfield Road in Camelback, or meetings, well, on, uh, next Thursday. Uh, that is expected to be a large meeting. We held at Saint Peter's Episcopal Church down the road.
The fifteen acres.
On the west side of Litchfield Road.
Litchfield Road, okay.
Yeah, the property owned by J D M.
Okay, yeah.
The big, good news for me, and I think for Board and City, uh, the city has found a planning consultant, and he hopefully will be starting in the next, uh, week or so. I believe he will be at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting next week.
And that was all?
Okay, that's it. Okay, thank you. Any board members with the current events? A motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, Daniel, thank you for.